All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:00 P. M., and I'd like to call to order the October 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is through the flag of the United States of America. And we would very proudly endorse the second one nation under our power, the Constitution of the United States. That's our call.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with the call?
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Sladak?
Here.
Trustee Topic?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Kagani?
Here.
All right, item number four is our oath of office.
Oh, that is me, too.
Yes.
Right up by the podium.
Yes.
Up by the podium so that the, uh, it will hear you.
Okay, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nathan Williams.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the Office of Library Trustee.
To the Office of Library Trustee.
Of the Downers Grove Public Library.
Of the Downers Grove Public Library.
In the village of Downers Grove.
In the village of Downers Grove.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee.
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. On behalf of the board, we'd like to welcome you two.
Thank you.
Board's trustee. All right, item number five is our consent agenda. We've got several items on here, including the September 25th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, September 25th, 2024 executive session minutes, October 2024 invoices, 2025 holiday closings, 2025 board meeting schedule, and 2024 November and December board meeting changes. Uh, there was just one quick typo on the minutes, just, um, Dave's last name is misspelled on item three, the consent agenda. That's it.
Yes, it is.
Yep, I will fix that.
You'd think they would know by now.
I'm sure you should.
Thank.
I'll try to counter.
Yep, not me.
Not me. That's all I saw.
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Item second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right, our consent agenda has been passed. Item number six is our financial matters. That should be September 2024 financial report.
My apologies for that. Um, both Caitlin and I managed to overlook that. Um, so now that we are using the consent agenda format, um, I just want to remind you that we approve the invoices within the consent agenda and that the financial matters, our financial reports are presented to the board, but they do not require your approval. So this is not an action item anymore. And that being said, let's jump right in. On the revenue side, um, you can see that our revenue for the September property taxes finally posted, so we are at 97.7% received for our property tax allocation for 2024. Um, again, that is the 2023 property taxes payable in 2024, um, that fund this fiscal year. Um, as you can see, we are considerably over in a number of our revenue lines, and we have already collected 96.3% of our projected revenue for 2024, here just 75% of the way through the, um, through the year. Uh, the next page is the expenditure report for our library capital replacement fund. Um, as you can see, that is only 4.6% expended, and that is due to the window replacement project that we are, um, working on. That project has been bid and awarded. Um, we just received word that we will have the steel and the glass in time for them to attempt to at least do about half of the project, the windows on the first floor in November, weather permitting. So, um, a, a good deal of this will probably, um, cross over to the, uh, 2025 budget. It will not be expended in 2024. We don't pay that last payment until after at 90. We pay the last payment at 100% completion. The second large payment goes, um, at, there's a payment at 50% completion, 90% completion, and 100%. So look for those coming. Um, and then on our expenditures in the operating fund, um, as you can see, we are, again, 75% of the way through the year. We've spent 66% of our, um, expected budget. The outliers, um, right now, special legal continues to be our largest outlier. Um, we have spent over $14,000 so far this year in legal fees. Uh, a lot of that owing to FOIA and OMA challenges and, um, responding to FOIA requests. Insurance, other policies, again, that is the line that we pay our liability insurance that comes in one lump sum in January every year, so that, that one is usually, uh, most of the way expended. Um, and then in capital equipment, I have, uh, brought this to your attention previously. 577-000 is capital equipment under $20,000, and 587-000 is capital equipment over $20,000. These are, again, we use the village's budget lines. Um, a number of the projects that we expected to come in over the $20,000 mark this year have all come in under the $20,000 mark. So you will see that we're at 118% expended in the under $20,000 line, but 0% expended in the, um, over $20,000 line. So those will come, those will, uh, will sync up at the end of the year, um, because we are, everything is coming in under 20, which is actually really great for us. It means things like the meeting room chairs that we ordered, that we expected to cost more than $35,000 came in at under 20, so great news there. Um, and, uh, the one other thing that I neglected to put in my librarian's report, but also, uh, kind of pertains to the way our, our budget lines go, for health insurance, um, we normally receive our renewal numbers here in October, so we have to have our library's budget done in August of every year. So we usually have an increment in the budget for the health, life, and dental insurance that is a, tends to, thankfully, has been a higher increment, um, than, uh, what we actually received. So as you can see in those lines, um, they're at like 58% expended, 75% of the way through the year, because that, the renewal for 2024 came in under budget. That will continue in 2025, because we received word that, from the village, that our renewal for health insurance is only 5% this year. We had budgeted for 7, um, and there is no, uh, increase at all for dental or optical, so.
Great, awesome.
Good news there. And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Item number seven is our public comment. Um, just a few reminders before I open the floor. Um, the public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. The public comment portion of this meeting is 30 minutes. As usual, we'll evaluate this at the 30-minute mark and extend time if we feel it's needed. Um, speakers are asked to limit comments to three minutes. The max is five minutes, and if you are representing a group, please limit your comments to one speaker for your whole group. Um, please refrain from applauding, heckling, and any side conversations. Um, with that being said, you will go ahead and open the floor.
Good evening, Ed Briner, Downers Grove resident. Nathan, welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome to the board. Tonight's topic, where's the safety for our children in the Downers Grove Library? Or even the concern? Allow me to give you an update on the types of incidents mothers and their children are likely to find, and this will only be from May through August this year. Intoxication, fighting, battery, individuals viewing porn, theft, vandalism, threats to patrons, harassment, swearing, banned individuals who continue to enter the library. You might as well not even ban them, because they just keep coming back anyway. Well, May through August, 16 serious incidents requiring the Downers Grove Police to come to the library. 16 in four months. That's one every week. Now, let me remind you that Director Milivek has repeatedly cited the Arlington Heights Library as her gold standard library, and how she tries to emulate their operation. So how's their security? The Arlington Heights Library has had only six incidents requiring the Arlington Heights Police to visit January through September. Only six visits in nine months versus 16 in four months for Downers Grove's library. Again, one per week. Now, if we look at the incidents for September, which weren't included here, that's another six police visits. So why, you ask? Here's why. The Arlington Heights Library has a separate, dedicated, trained security force of six trained and managed individuals by a former police officer. The security manager and his team are in the library, securing it from open to close. That's why. So Julie, if you want to, want to be like the Arlington Heights Library, then start by adding a full-time security team.
Can you make sure you're addressing the trustees?
Our library owes the mothers and other patrons and donors a safer library, especially considering that we provide you with a $6 million annual budget of our tax dollars. Tonight, uh, Ms. Milivek, please explain to, uh, the mothers of Downers Grove why you continue to allow threatening incidents to occur week after week, month after month, and do nothing about it. The library's, uh, number one responsibility, that's you, Ms. Director, and you, the trustees, is to make the library safe for our children. You're failing us.
We're at three minutes.
Any future incident catastrophe will be on your hands. Thank you.
Good evening, Eileen Briner, resident. Welcome, Nathan. I'll speak tonight with regard to the hiring of a social worker for our library. I've heard here mentioned before that the Arlington Heights Library is considered the gold standard library. So with regard to a social worker, the Arlington Heights Library does not have a full-time or a part-time social worker, and there are no current plans to add one to the library's staff. The Village of Arlington Heights Social Services Team has a regular office hours in the library twice monthly. A social worker is onsite to assist individuals who have questions about available social services in Arlington Heights, or who are seeking counseling or other mental health services. The social worker is able to answer questions and provide local resources and referrals to related, to mental health, government programs, and benefits, managing stress and conflict, community programs, and financial services. Arlington Heights has a population of 73,520 residents, which is considerably higher than Downers Grove at just under 50,000 residents. Downers Grove has a social worker who's not overworked by her own statement. The library has not presented a strong case argument for the need of a social worker at the cost of $100,000 per year. Funds are running low in the capital fund in the library budget. It is incumbent on this board to judiciously use the funds available. Taxpayers are pinched with high inflation and would appreciate as much break as possible. Thank you for considering these concerns.
Good evening, my name is Hillary Deng. I'm at 433 Wilson Street in Downers Grove. Um, have not been here since we've been in the new facility. It's beautiful. Um, I just wanted to thank you, uh, thank the library for giving information for voters. Um, you have a really wonderful, dedicated, uh, page of information on your website, and I know there's a lot of good information in the library itself as we're heading into a really important election. Um, and as a very active member of our local League of Women Voters, it's great to have another resource of nonpartisan information for voters, and so I just wanted to make a public comment, and thank you.
Hi, Gloria Walshrock, resident. Welcome, Nathan.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to applaud the library staff and board for considering the, uh, the addition of a social worker on the staff. As a librarian, for the last 20 years, I've seen the trend in libraries across the country, the need, uh, to add that kind of a staff member in order to maintain safety in the building, in order to address the social, emotional needs of people that are walking into the public building every day. And, um, it's happening more and more around the country that libraries do need social workers on their staff to fill the gaps for librarians that, while well-trained in many, many things, are not necessarily trained in, uh, helping mental health issues of their patrons. So I think it's a wonderful thing, and I thank the library for doing that.
Hi, I'm Shuhini Roy, 4509 Elm Street, Downers Grove. Um, I'm here, I'm here because this is the first time I'm in this meeting, but I use the library extensively, mainly to borrow books. But there are a few things I saw this month and which are coming up next month, which I wanted to commend. I loved the goodie bags, but I didn't just love the cardamom in it, I loved the materials that came with it, the research that went into it, the recipes, and I loved the diversity of the recipes. There were recipes from Sweden, there were recipes from India, I think there was a recipe from Iran, it, it was three or four countries, and it was Western countries, non-Western countries. The display with cookbooks that had recipes, it was really amazing, and I appreciated the research and thought that went into it. I also really appreciate how helpful the library staff is. I often ask for books which are not to be found or which are not in the library, but they make sure that I get them. So I wanted to thank the library staff and the board for maintaining such a lovely public resource for us.
Debbie Anderson Phillips, Downers Grove resident. I just want to, um, again, thank the library and the board for all their work for being an award-winning, nationally-recognized library, and for having attendance, for having programming that has contributed to increased attendance this year. It would seem fairly logical that an award-winning library and a library that has increased attendance for children and families and adults is considered a safe library, a safe space for the citizens of Downers Grove, and thank you for making it a safe place for all of us.
Any other public comments? All right, thank you very much. We are on to item number eight, which is our trustee comments.
I'm on the end of the row here, and I'll start. Just again, a, a huge welcome to our new trustee, Nathan Williams. We're welcoming you, and gonna push you to work right away.
Thank you, Dan.
I also want to point out that there is a very new and recent edition of the discoveries that should have been in everybody's mailbox, everybody who lives in Downers Grove, at least mailbox this week. And, uh, it contains some wonderful things. For example, uh, did you know that we have Braille Lego bricks in our Anything Emporium? Um, we have a program featuring the State of Illinois poet laureate in November. We've reimagined the teen and, I say we, our staff provides the leadership on these things, obviously. Reimagined the teen and tween areas and have a new teen advisory board. Um, we have a couple of library picks, they're called VIPs by the very important pickers, our library staff choices, and so much more. So be sure to read this every minute comes in. Finally, I just want to urge everyone, if you haven't already, please vote.
A couple of things. One is following up on the comment I made last month, saying that I would like to do some additional training on library finance. I did that at the ILA earlier this, this month, the excellent workshop, so I'm feeling a little better grounded now, and will be doing more follow-up on that. Secondly, congratulations to Van McGarry and her staff on the Human Library Project. It was phenomenal. I had the privilege of being a book, and I had seven people come and read me, help me share, share the story. The work that went into that, on top of their full-time jobs, the organization that it took, and the classy touches. I have to, I have to show you this. Probably can't see it. It's a little handwritten thank you note tag that came wrapped around the T-shirts that all the participants got. Nice touch. And I particularly wanted to, to pass on congratulations to Maryam, Jessica, Karen, and Alan, who were the main point people, putting it all together. It was wonderful. That's all I've got.
I just want to say welcome. We're excited to work with you and, and, you know, do whatever we're doing.
Thank you for the warm welcomes.
Staying here, welcome, Nathan.
Well, I had one day to prepare comments. I'll say first that I thank Carissa for her service. I'm especially grateful for her presentation showing comparative data on peer library practices. I was physically here in person for that meeting, and very impressed with her presentation and her data collection. And as an exec consultant and management consultant, uh, we're heavily into that type of work, so, uh, it, it, it was something I want to honor. Uh, I have big shoes to fill. I'd also like to thank Julie and Swatna for their orientation efforts over the last 24 hours.
We tried.
You've been, you've been very hospitable and informative. Finally, I'd like to hi, highlight two recent library programs that I enjoyed. My wife stole my thunder on the first one, but I'll say it anyway. The Grab and Go Kit on Cardamom. Uh, it's informative and included recipes and book recommendations. Uh, it's an example of how the library is inclusive and multicultural, and my Bengali-American wife noted that the library has provided high-quality spices, so remember you want, you want, you want. She's now embarrassed.
Your work here is done, you've embarrassed your wife.
The second program, the Great Decisions Sessions. I attended the ones on Project 2025, Local Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and I participated as an active listener. I gained insight into how others think about those issues. It's an example of two core elements of the library's function, to promote civil discourse and to provide access to diversity of information and diversity of thought. To illustrate the latter point, one D E I participant provided a summary of the ideas of Thomas Sowell and shared related, a related article and a book. Professor Sowell is an economist who adheres to the University of Chicago School of Economic Tradition, a free-market libertarian thinking. So when we say our library is exclusively presenting a progressive point of view, this is one instance where that certainly is not true. I look forward to next year's Great Decisions Program, which will focus on foreign policy issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm last. So, welcome again. Um, I will also say that high-quality cardamom is extremely important. Um, I don't have much else to say, as, um, as you can see, we do have new business of the election of officers, so this will be my last meeting serving as president. It's been privileged, it's been, um, an interesting two years, for sure. I've learned a lot, and I'm, I'm very grateful for a very supportive team of trustees and extremely wonderful staff, including Julie, Jen, and Caitlin, and everyone else that's helped me along the way, and, um, been there to, you know, take my calls and field all my questions. So, and thank you, most importantly, all of you that have been coming and giving us all your input and feedback for the library. All right. Item number nine is our library director's report.
Most of my report is a written report in your board packet. Um, I just wanted to call out, um, the Human Library event, which went so well. Um, we had eight, uh, folks who were the books in our collection, um, and there were eight time slots for each of them throughout the evening. We had 63 people participate, checked them out, so we were almost, we were one shy of completely checked out all night. So it was a wonderful event. Um, folks are already asking when we can do it again, and so we are looking at when we can do it again. For the, for the record, Human Library is a, um, it is a nonprofit, um, and it is out of Denmark, and they only allow you to have one license open at a time for a Human Library event, so we have to officially do all of our close-out things before we can apply for a new date. So those of you who are chomping at the bit for a new date, this, we, we have to finish up this one first, uh, before we can do that. But it was a fantastic event. Our volunteers, our staff, we cannot say enough about those who volunteered to be books in our Human Library, and we are looking forward to off-
books in our Human Library, and we are looking forward to offering that opportunity again to anyone who cares to do that. So look for that coming in the discoveries sometime in 2025, our, our call out for more volunteers. And then I just want to give a shout out to some staff members of ours who are really doing great work. Beyond Mary McDonald, our program coordinator, and Van McGarry, who are our adult and teen services manager, who put together the Human Library event, which was fantastic. We have a couple of other people who are doing some really fantastic things, like completely in the background. And one of them is Josh Worth, who is one of our library assistants up in the adult and teen services area. He recently took on the way we do our book club bags, and he completely revamped the entire process and made it all digital and just, it is a thing of beauty. He's got it automated on monday.com, so all of the reminders go out automatically. The whole staff can see exactly where anything is in the process, and so it has just been, it has literally saved staff hours and hours and hours of work per week because he went above and beyond to completely revamp that process when given that, that task. And then Tim Robb, who is also one of our assistants, who recently took on our interlibrary loan operations, and he is spearheading the team that does that. And they also took an entire process that used to be lots of paper and made it 100% digital, and it is so streamlined, absolutely amazing. So I just want to, to really highlight the work that they are doing so quietly in the background because those are the things that let us do the additive projects of our new strategic work plan. And you can see what we're doing in 2024, dglibrary.org/ transparency. Our work plan tracker is on there, it's got all of our goals for the year. In a few months, it'll change over and it'll be the 2025 work plan tracker, and there'll be all new goals with a few coming over. But take a look at that, take a look at the departmental reports in our board packet. There's a lot of great stuff happening at the library. And I also want to give a shout out to our newest building operations monitor, Elvis Shaiko, who is absolutely amazing. He came on when Tony Druffki, a lot of you may have met Tony along the way, he was with us for a long time, 17 years? 16 years. And so losing him was, was big, but Elvis has come on and he is just amazing. He is building relationships with our regular patrons. He is a smiling face, so if you see him out and about in the library, say hello, introduce yourself, he's doing great work.
All right, item number 10 is new business, our election of officers. Can I say something before? I wanted to say this in my comments, but I wanted you to make your comment about this being your last meeting. And I didn't say it then, so I wanted you to have the opportunity to say that. I would like to say it's been an honor to sit on this board with you as the president. Thank you for saying yes. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for not quitting. And thank you for leading us with grace and conviction. We are so lucky to have had you. Thank you. And thank you, I'm excited to have you just like sit over here. Different view. All right, so according to our board bylaws, Article 5, our officer section. Section 1 is our election information. The board shall elect a president and a secretary at the first meeting after board appointments of an even numbered year to serve for two years. Vacancies are to be filled by special elections for the remainder of the term. So we just had board appointments for Nathan, so we will be having our two-year term election tonight to go through October 2026. With that being said, I will open the floor up to nominations.
I would like to nominate Matt Topic for president.
All right.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second for Matt to be our incoming president. Do we do a voice vote for this?
Yes.
Okay. And then should we just go ahead and do secretary as well? All right, we'll open up the floor for secretary nominations as well.
I nominate Marty Sladek for secretary.
Second.
We have a nomination for Marty Sladek and a second for position of secretary. So that will be our slate of candidates, unless we have any other input or any other nominations. All right, perfect. So our slate is Matt Topic as our president and Marty Sladek as secretary. We'll go ahead and proceed with a voice vote, please.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
Trustee Topic?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
President, outgoing president.
A very enthusiastic yes. All right, well, congratulations. The gavel's right here.
I plan to use the gavel accent.
All right, congratulations and thank you for taking that role on. Item number 11 is unfinished business, and item number 12 is our executive session. We will be going into executive session to discuss our library director evaluation, and we will be adjourning straight from our executive session. So this will conclude the public portion of our meeting. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out. Any other final comments before we close this out?
We need a motion to...
We need a motion to, yes, a motion to move into executive session.
All right, I, I move that we go into executive session for discussion of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
We have a second.
All right, all those in favor of moving into the executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of us opposed? All right, perfect. So 7:37 is when we're moving into executive session. Thank you all again, have a lovely night.